2016 Pittsburgh City Council Meeting to Order. Councilor Bean, would you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
(inaudible)
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
President Kushnerich.
President.
Councilor Bean.
President.
Councilor Boishman.
President.
Councilor Beazall.
President.
Councilor Clark.
Here.
Councilor Deenatali.
Here.
Councilor Green.
President.
Councilor Hay.
Here.
Councilor Joseph.
President.
Councilor Caddy.
Here.
Councilor Tran.
Here.
Public forum. Anyone wishing to speak on a matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing a public hearing petition, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda to which you are speaking. Does anyone wish to speak? Chief Martino.
Good evening, Councilors. Ernest Martino, Chief of Police, City of Pittsburgh. I'd like to bring to your attention and address this evening Finance Order 3-16. This is an expenditure of funds from a recurring grant that the Pittsburgh Police Department receives yearly from the Executive Office of Public Safety. There's three grants that were awarded again this year: pedestrian safety grant, the traffic safety grant, and the Governor's Highway Safety Grant. Those three grants total $24,000. And with the approval of the Finance Committee and City Council, we can start spending that funding. Would there be any questions this evening regarding that expenditure of those?
Motion for suspension of 3-16.
A motion and second for suspension of the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The item is before you.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adopt the order. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you, Councilors.
Thank you, Chief. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak? Hearing none, move on to the Committee on Records. Councilor Hay?
(inaudible). In order.
I have a motion and second to adopt the report from the Committee on Records. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Communications from His Honor, the Mayor. Dear Honorable Counselors, I hereby appoint and ask for the confirmation of Mr. Clayton R. Raymond of 559 Shea Street, Pittsburgh, Massachusetts, as a member of the Airport Commission for a term to expire on February 1st, 2018. Dear Honorable Counselors, I hereby ask for -- appoint and ask for your confirmation of Mr. Richard Levertori of 404 Westminster Hill Road, Pittsburgh, Mass., as a member of the Airport Commission for a term to expire July 1st, 2016. Dear Honorable Counselors, this is a supplemental letter informing you of my recent appointments to the Airport Commission of Mr. Clayton Raymond. Will fill the seat of Mr. Stephen Broussot and Mr. Richard Levertori will fill the seat of Mr. Joe Poznick. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. Sincerely, Stephen Aldeanatali, Mayor. Dear Honorable Counselors, I hereby appoint and ask for your confirmation of Ms. Donna Pollak of 509 Main Street, Pittsburgh, Mass., as a member of the Board of License Commissions to fill the balance of the appointment of Vincent Pousteri set to expire on June 1st, 2018. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. Sincerely, Stephen Aldeanatali, Mayor. Dear Ms. Farrell, I hereby appoint Mr. Sarahfield of 38 Rogers F., Pittsburgh, Mass., as Chairman of the Board of License Commissioners to fill the balance of the appointments set to expire on May 1st, 2020.
Please.
Appointments.
(inaudible).
That does not need to go to appointments, the Counselors. Thank you. It's just communications.
This is another communication?
Okay.
Under other.
All right. Where are the other communications?
That one?
Okay. So we have two communications this evening. There's a memo from Michael O'Hara, Principal Planner, with regards to Petition 233-15, Proposed Zoning Amendment Nonconforming One and Two Family Dwellings. After required public hearing, as its December 15th, 2015 meeting, the Pittsburgh Planning Board voted 4-0 to recommend in favor of this amendment, which they initiated. Referred to Petition 233-15 on today's agenda. Counselors, you should have received a Pension Reserves Investment Management Board memo. Motion and second to place on file in the Clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous.
Maybe that one doesn't have to be read to us. Typically, it's communications to the Council and that. It's more of a general publication. You need to do every meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Bean. Moving on to the agenda. 94-15, the Pittsburgh City Council pursuant to the unanimous affirmative vote on April 22nd, 2015, on Petition 38-15, does now propose a Chapter 181 zoning of the code of the City of Pittsburgh, be amended to create a solar farm component. I declare the hearing resumed. Counselors, this was simply resumed or recessed to this date in order to provide more time to the Planning Board. This was moved to this date until we set the official council agenda and could project out further. At this time, I entertain a motion to continue the hearing to March 15th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to continue the hearing until March 15th, 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Declare the hearing.
It's done.
Okay. Public hearing, 233-15, Michael J. O'Hara, per vote of the Pittsburgh Planning Board to amend Pittsburgh zoning ordinance, Section 181.356, regarding abandonment or non-use of existing nonconforming single or two-family structures. Declare the hearing open. Any person or persons representing the petition may now come forth to the center table. Counselors, you also have a packet in front of you prepared by City Solicitor Pousatieri. At this time, I'll ask the City Solicitor to discuss the documents that are in front of you referencing this petition.
So, in front of you, you have portions of the zoning bylaw, 181, Section 3, which discusses principal uses, simply because it is referred to in the petition for the amendment, discusses what uses are applicable in different zoning areas, what uses are allowed by special permit from the zoning board, and what uses are currently allowed by special permit from the Planning Board or by City Council. Specifically, what we're looking to do tonight is, and I'm going to let the planning department speak to it, is modify a special permit procedure for nonconforming uses of structures regarding single-family homes or two-family homes. Three-family homes and other types of nonconforming uses and structures are not going to be part of the petition. The specific issue occurs or comes up when there's been abandonment of use for a period of two years. Particularly, we have a structure where you have a structure that is conforming or is not conforming, most likely, to the current status of our zoning bylaws. It becomes abandoned. It's not used for a period of time, and someone wants to come down to the building department, pull an application for a building permit, make renovations. That's when we have the problem. And I think those petitions routinely have been coming before you guys, and that'll be what the amendment's about.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Councilor Deenatali.
So the crux of my question really is, the changes in here involve these recurring special permit hearings that we get when the building commissioner rejects a use of a building because it was vacant for more than two years?
And is nonconforming as far as lot size or setbacks or frontage requirement.
So for a single and a two-family structure, that will no longer require that to go through the council for?
Or anyone.
Or anyone.
Just deal with the building department and get a building permit. There was one recently in 37, I think it was, Prospect Street, where the fellow was just trying to, you know, revitalize, reuse that. And there's been a couple of other situations like that.
So they'll be going through all normal channels except having to come here for us to grant the allowance of them to proceed?
If they, if you see the language of the amendment, that's right. But only for single and two-family dwellings, and only if that use, the single or two-family dwelling, is permitted in that zoning district.
Thank you.
Which was the case on Prospect Street.
Thank you.
Councilor Caddy.
Are there any plans on changing the process for a three-family? This past year, we've granted three or four of them, and one of them, we granted, we granted with no parking, which I don't think that there's many councilors here that really have any experience in anything like that. Another one we passed this year, recently, I've gotten calls from neighbors that were upset because of what the person said they were going to do, they didn't do. My worry is Pittsburgh has got a lot of three-family homes and abandoned, and my worry is there, these petitions are coming to us, and we really have no experience in this. So again, my question, is this on the radar? This is something that possibly you could work on in the future?
Well, it wouldn't be coming to the City Council in the case of a three-family or any other. The second paragraph, which says amend 181 3561 by striking the word "City Council", inserting the words "Board of Appeals," that generally says, now, the Board of Appeals may grant special permit authorizing the reconstruction, reuse, et cetera, of a nonconforming structure that has been vacant for more than two years. So in the case of the three-family, like you had mentioned, that would still be a special permit, but going to the Board of Appeals, who I think, to be honest, is more used to that kind of issue.
Absolutely.
In the Planning Board. How it was initially proposed, I had suggested to the folks on the Planning Board, just have the special permit granting authority be the, you folks, the Planning Board, but they felt it was more like an appeal-type of situation, so it was decided to make it the Board of Appeals. At the public hearing on this in December, that the Planning Board had, I know at least one ZBA member, Mike McLaughlin, was present. I think you were too, Vanny.
Some of you.
And I didn't hear any objection to the Board of Appeals getting that.
And this is different than what we, and I was incorrect when I was speaking to you earlier. All of these petitions are going to the zoning Board of Appeals, and no one needs to make an application if they're seeking to modify a single-family or a two-family home. So that was my error when we spoke earlier.
So Petition 0616 is for a public hearing before the City Council for an existing three-family home. So should we hold off on that and let this go through its process?
My understanding is that that petition would need to proceed under the current criteria or the zoning criteria that existed at the time it was filed. So if we were to try to just redirect that to the zoning board, that would be somewhat of a change. It could be the petitioner's option, because the criteria on those special permits are in your packets. Unfortunately, there were a smaller text page that came out, the second page, and it sets out a balancing test, benefit to the city and the neighborhood on the one hand, and the adverse effects of the proposed use. And it lists out six factors for us to consider, but you can consider any factor you'd like to consider. So you will have a set of criteria in front of you if it is that this council decides to hear the application regarding the three-family.
Thank you. Councilor Hay.
My only question is, the ones and twos that this is addressing, Mike, can they change use? Could a one-family that had been abandoned for over two years now be turned into a two-family through this process?
If that was permitted in the use regulations, if that's permitted in the table uses.
Would they have to go before zoning, or if it was zoned in a place that had twos, or could they just automatically do it?
For example, if it was a single in rural residence, well, let us back up. If it was a single in Residence B and Residence C, two-family are also permitted by right. So if you're switching from a one to a two, you just need to deal with the building department.
Okay. And to follow up to Councilor Caddy's question about the one that's on the agenda this evening, I understand that they would have to proceed with the original application, which would be the old process, but if they so choose, could they withdraw that, reapply, and then it would go the other route? Yeah, I think that would be, can I answer that first? That would be a motion that your petitioner could make if they wanted to. Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Beazall.
Thank you. I have, like, a real concern. I realize that we all want to get all of the abandoned properties back on the market, but when I was talking to the building commissioner about this, he says basically, we're giving people permission to move into houses that haven't even been upgraded. So, especially in the case of a three-family, we're giving people the right to rent to people, and the structure might not even be safe, might not even be checked out. We're just giving people the right to open that house and go back in business. Now, what I was being told was the City Council can actually say, before you move in there and we grant you this special permit, we want these certain things done. I don't have enough knowledge on structural engineering or electrical engineering or any of that to actually say what needs to be done within a home. So it's almost as if we need to change the process that before the person comes before us and grants this, that they've actually gone through the permit plan and actually have gotten advice from people to say what needs to be done in those in order to make them safe. It just seems to me that we're opening up the door by continuously approving these for some day a tragedy to happen in the city where somebody moves into a building and because of shorty wiring or because of structural damage, that somebody gets hurt in those I know I feel uncomfortable about saying to somebody, this building's been vacant for two years. There's probably a good reason why that building's been vacant for two years, but it's okay. You can start moving people in tomorrow. I think it's something that we need to look to in the future. So, thank you.
Councilor Boishman.
My question for you. On these one and two families, or three and four, or five and six, or seven and eight, if we give special permits, are we going to have them go before the building department and bring it up to the current codes on their special permits on a single family or a two-family? Or are we just going to say in front of the zoning, oh, here, go ahead, as long as you get parking, if you cut the hedges and you cut your grass and you maintain, it's okay? Are they going to be bringing these houses up to code?
I think that's a requirement anyway, regardless, I mean, aside from the land use, aside from the zoning part of it, giving permission for that land use, and in your situation, Angelo, you still need to comply with the building code, so, and get whatever permits or a new occupancy permit for that, re-establishing that use. So to answer your question, yeah, you still need to.
They'll go in front of Duffy, and he'll say, I want to know about the energy, if it's blown in insulation or Pink Panther, if you need a sprinkler system, we're going to make them put a sprinkler system in.
Yeah, I mean Duffy's obviously way more knowledgeable about the code, but it's certainly subject to the building code.
Oh, so it won't be up to current codes? If it, let me ask you this question. If it goes vacant for two years, two years, and then I decide to buy a house that was built in 1998, I mean, the year 2010, three, 2008, and it's only four years old, how would the person know if it's up to code? Are we going to tear the walls down?
I don't know the answer to that. I think the applicant is obligated to do what the building commissioner says he must do.
All right. All right. I just want to make sure they're going to be brought up to code. That's all.
Councilor Beazall.
(inaudible).
Sorry, Councilor, are we finished? Councilor Joseph.
I guess I have, who requested?
The change, this change?
It was, well, it was the Planning Board initiated it. I mean, because we saw that there was repeated examples of these going to the City Council for a special permit when maybe it didn't need to, you know, so.
Could you thank them for us?
We'll make it into that.
Next, in response to Councilor Hay, I mean, it says, and provided that no modifications of the use or structure is accomplished, so if they plan on going to a two-family, they would need to get a special permit, okay? They can't just change to an in-law apartment or, you know, a two-family from a one-family without a special permit. So I don't think that, it says, you know, they can have it, even if it's allowed in that area, they're still changing the use of that dwelling. As far as Councilor Beazall, I mean, if somebody sells a house today at 20 Tilton Street and it's not up to code, the person that moves in tomorrow doesn't have to go for a building, to the building permit commissioner or anything for any additional information or upgrades, because that house, so what's the difference if it was abandoned for two years? It still has to, prior to it being sold, it has to have an inspection by the fire department, and it has to have all of the latest equipment for smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors and things like that. But I don't see, just because a building's been closed for two years, that doesn't mean that the building commissioner has to come in, say you bought a house that was built in 2000, I mean, in 1914, and it's been abandoned, it's been occupied for every year, that doesn't mean that it's up to code. So why would you have to have the building commissioner come in, whether it's been empty or occupied? The building commissioner's not going to get involved in this. So if you want to buy an unsafe home, then you're buying an unsafe home on your own peril, and that's your own business. I mean, if you want, if that's what you want to buy and the price is right, then you're going to do that. If you're going to do modifications to it, then of course you have to get the building commissioner involved to make sure that you do your modifications properly. But a regular sale of a home, whether it's safe or unsafe, a single-family home, why would the building commissioner be involved in that at all? And why does he need to be involved? It's just a sale of a house, as long as it meets the fire regulations. So I'm glad to see that at least the three-family homes are going to go to the Board of Appeals, and I think that that's the right place for it to go. We're not in the business to make the decisions like parking and things like that, that they deal with every day, in-law apartments, all of the things, three-family changed to a four-family, all of those things that they would normally see as a zoning board. And I'd never thought that, just because the house has been abandoned for two years and the setback wasn't correct, and, you know, for the regulations back in 1978, that we would have them tear down the structure. So I had no idea why we were seeing those anyways, just because they were abandoned for two years. So I think that we're moving in the right direction for these and just taking one level of bureaucracy out of the process of somebody buying their own home.
Councilor Deenatali.
My concern is if, on Petition 6-16, my concern right now is, hearing what the solicitor just said about the original application, has to follow the existing process before this gets implemented. And it was stated earlier that if the petitioner requests that it be going to, it refiles an application, I guess, to go to the zoning board, have they not already paid a fee to have this be put through to the City Council? So I'm not speaking for them. I find it hard to believe that they're going to pull the application, resubmit it, and have to wait another month or two to go through the zoning board. But if they wanted to do that, I don't know if the city can do this, but I, you know, as a matter of good faith on our part, because it's not their fault, I would hope we would refund them the application fee and then have them apply that to the zoning board application, not have them get charged twice, in my opinion. I don't know if we can do that legally, but I find, I just, I feel as if that is the avenue they're going to take. I think they will take it if the city refunds them the money for what they had to do to go through us. So I don't know if that's possible, but I would hope if it is, we do that. It's not their fault, but they got to go back to zoning. Thank you.
Councilor Beazall.
Thank you. So if we're following with the logic that two-family, if it's been vacant for two years, and it's fine and it's dandy, and if I buy a house and it's in a mess, that it doesn't matter and this and that, then why are we even going through this process? Why don't we just say to everybody who comes to Pittsburgh, you can buy whatever house you want, it doesn't matter how vacant it's been? Why are we going through this? I would recommend that we reach out to the building commissioner, who I had a conversation to about this yesterday, and actually find out what his process is in these buildings. I think you're going to find out that it's pretty much people are buying these as-is and they're just moving people in. And I'm not worried about the person buying it, because they're not probably going to live in these buildings. I'm worried about the people who take up residence in these buildings, who are residents of the City of Pittsburgh, who may be entering buildings that aren't safe. That's what I'm concerned about. But if everyone here feels like we don't need any process, then just get rid of the process and anybody can buy any house that's been vacant for as long as they want. Thank you.
Councilor Tran.
We had several of these petitions that came in front of the council last year, and there were a couple of times that we had a hard time discussing it because we didn't have the expertise in terms of building, in terms of plumbing, in terms of health. And we had an in-depth discussion about asking the City Solicitor to have a discussion with other boards and commissions and maybe the Board of Appeals, to see if there's an avenue where we can take this process away from the City Council and place it where it's supposed to, where the purview's supposed to be. And I think this is the result of that discussion, and if it is, I appreciate it. I think this is the right course of action, just to get a confirmation and clarity from the City Solicitor now, that the main change that we're looking at is basically just taking it out of the City Council and handing the process and the procedure to the Board of Appeals. Is that correct?
Sir, yes, you are correct for structures, three families and other structures, three families, four families, five families, commercial structures. For single-family homes and two-family homes, the process would be, they would be entitled to occupy those by right. Now, the only reason why a citizen would come to the building department in the first place is if the citizen wanted to file a notice of intent to do some construction on a single-family home or a two-family home. And that's how we would come in contact with these types of buildings, other than with the fire code inspection upon a sale. And so if the person wants to buy a single-family home or a two-family home, they pass this fire inspection on the sale for financing purposes. They go through their home inspection if it's a financed purchase, they can move right in. If it's not conforming currently, they can't move in. They need to get a special permit. And those special permits are issued by this council currently. What we're going to do, if you guys decide to pass this, what you're going to say is, if you have a building that doesn't conform to your current zoning, whether it's habitable, not habitable, it will not be a prohibition to its use because of its nonconforming. There may be other prohibitions to its use, but not because it doesn't conform to zoning. If you have a three-family, four-family, multifamily property, or a commercial building or industrial building that doesn't conform to zoning, you have to make an application for a special permit to the zoning board and not to this body. That's what we'll do if you pass this.
Thank you.
Councilor Boishman.
So what I'm trying to understand, you're saying that if Paul Boishman buys a two-family home and it's been vacant for five years? home and it's been vacant for five years, I don't have to go to the building department? All I have to do is get the fire department involved and say, I got my smoke detectors and that's it?
And you may not even have to do the fire department if it's a cash purchase. If you're going to bank financing, I do, I do know there's a requirement for a smoke certificate. I'm not gonna attempt to correct the counselor, 'cause I don't know off the top of my head whether or not the fire department is involved in every single transaction, but I think that's only for financed transactions. So if I had a single-family home and I wanted to sell it to you, I could sell it to you. If you had the dollar and I wanted, I wanted a dollar for the property, it's all yours, you now own it. We would sign a deed, file with the registry of deeds, the tax bill would catch up to you eventually and you would own that property. If the property is non-conforming because it doesn't have a setback, a side yard setback or you, uh, and the use was abandoned for two years, you would have to file an application for a special permit and it currently would come here.
On a two-family?
On a two, single-family, on a two-family and...
Anything more?
And anything else, yes, on any, on any structure.
So, how, as a council, if you're saying all of this, how can we improve neighborhoods? If I say, I got a two-family and Mr. O'Hara's got money, he's an investor and he's buying a piece of property cheap, he says, okay, and I'll go in and just put paint on the walls, but there's no insulation in the walls, the, the wiring's not of the present code, the chimney's falling apart and the house looks like hell and a neighborhood that you're trying to build up to make a stronger neighborhood, if we got no rules?
Well, the, uh, if you're talking about a two-family house that's gonna be put to use as a rental property...
Right.
Uh, which is probably the, I would assume to be the majority of the properties that, that you're identifying there.
I would just...
You would, as, as a city council, what you would have to do is empower your Board of Health to be able to do code enforcement, um, and which they do a good job at, quite frankly, which would include receiving tenants' complaints on quality or conditions of their habit, of their, of their apartments. If an apartment is not habitable for whatever reason, there's a multiplicity of reasons why an apartment might not be habitable, your Board of Health goes in regularly, cites owners and brings them to housing court. And that's, that's the process as far as quality of construction. Uh, but what we're talking about with this amendment is just simply zoning requirements. Front yard setback, side yard setback, square footage of the area of a lot, um, and I think that's primarily the, the, the non-conforming dimensional requirements. And then the other type of non-conforming you're talking about with this particular petition is uses. So it was a residential home, but it was placed in an industrial zone. Now, it's been abandoned for two years, so we no longer have the right currently to go back and use that home as a home. So someone may come and buy that property, they see a single-family home there, they wanna use it, uh, your building department would drive by there and they would be right to give them a cease and desist order because it's no longer currently zoned correctly. Uh, it's, it's, it's a violation of zoning to use that as a single-family home. So what you're, you're not talking about non-conforming structures that relate to electrical, fire, um, other construction-type code, building code requirements. You're talking about zoning requirements, which are either dimensional requirements in their nature or use. And that's what we're talking about when you're, when you're voting on this petition. So there's, in my mind, two distinct, but I, I think the councils, all the councils' concerns about the quality of construction, they're valid, but it's a daunting task to police all of that, too. You know, it would be too, uh, it would be quite, quite a task to police that.
I don't, I don't know. I'm trying, I don't know, I don't, to me, I don't know.
I think we're, we're not improving the neighborhoods.
I mean, if I come in front, like, let's say 37 Blosson Street, we're not gonna make the guy pick up the house and push it back. We already know that. He can't move it back. He's, he's dead. I understand what you're saying there, but why are we not just having everything all at once? If you're coming in front of this board or even the zoning board for a special permit and the house has been vacant, why not enforce all the present rules of today?
Okay. So if I can answer that question, I would start off, we have two groups of people that live in our city. Those that are gonna come in and check in with our building department when they wanna do improvements to property, file notices of intent and receive denial letters from our building department, which will then prompt them to file an application and pay the petition fee. And those folks that just simply don't comply with that obligation. It's the people that, that comply with the obligation, those are the ones that wind up in front of either the city council, uh, currently under this, the current procedure, or are gonna wind up in front of the zoning board should this council vote to approve it. If they file a notice of intent with the building department substantially, in my mind currently, there's very few reasons why they would do that and it would be because they would want to get a building permit. They would wanna do some improvement to the property, whether it's redo a bathroom, kitchen, put on an addition, those types of improvements, and that's typically what triggers these types of cases from coming up. If that's the case, then they are gonna comply with, with the, with the building code. Your inspectors in the building department are gonna go through and they're gonna inspect this, the, at least the component of the improvement, whether it be a new bathroom, new kitchen, new addition, whatever it might be. For those buildings that don't require a notice of intent or don't require the citizen to come into the building department, you wanna buy my house from me and you wanna move right in and it's a non-conforming, you're gonna occupy that property and be there. Now, uh, the building department may or may not have the ability to enforce that. So if you bought from me a non-conforming structure, uh, let's say I have a house in an industrial zone and I've abandoned it for a period of time and now all of a sudden you're moving in and the neighbors are saying, hey, why is this all of a sudden being used as a residential property? Currently, you wouldn't be allowed to do that. And many of, uh, well, I don't wanna argue, 'cause I'm not here to persuade, I'm just trying to advise, but my experience on the zoning board is many of the citizens come in and they don't understand why. Here's the house, it's been here since 19, you know, 1940, it's been a single-family home, I know this industrial zone's been built up around it, but I wanna move in. I bought the house, I didn't know, you know, I couldn't live in it as a house. It looks like a house, it's got a kitchen, a bathroom, bedrooms, closets, and now all of a sudden, uh, the building department has said, I can't do what seems to be plainly obvious that I should be able to do with this particular piece of property. That's, I think, the genesis of the idea behind allowing single-family and two-family uses to be as of right from now on. So that's why we're excluding that from even the special permit process altogether. And the concept of having the balance of the, of the, of the structures go to the zoning board is to set it in front of a board that is more accustomed to applying this criteria that's set out in 181, nine, 932. And that's, that's the two issues that I think we have is, is allowing people to use structures that are single-family homes and two-family homes as of right, uh, even if the use was abandoned, and allowing them to go to the zoning board instead of here for any other structure. I'm, I'm trying to clarify that.
Counselor Boishman, are you all set?
Trying to get it.
Well, it's just a difference between, uh, zoning issue, dimensional requirement, frontage, side yard setback, area requirement, maybe we need to have a, a certain, a hun, uh, 10,000 square feet for a particular lot of land. Um, or we have a house in a commercial area and it's no longer, um, it's because it's a commercial zone, you can't use it as a single-family house anymore if it's, the use was abandoned. So you can imagine, there's been a house in Fitchburg, and I'm sure, I can't think of, um, uh, an area off the top of my head where, um, you have a, um, well, there is an industrial building on Walton Street and it's been an industrial building for a long time. And if that, uh, uh, use was abandoned, then it could no longer be used as an industrial building. Uh, it would, uh, that use would no longer be lawful and in order to get that use, you would need to go in front of the zoning board or this council and get a special permit to continue that use. But, um, um, when it's, when it's an industrial building in a residential area, I think your citizens kinda understand that. They say, okay, I kinda get that, they may not be happy about it, but they'll understand it. But when it's a house, a single-family home, or it's their home, 'cause typically, these are owner-occupied properties, we, we see single-family and two-family homes being owner-occupied. They just can't understand, it looks like, it smells like, it is a single-family, it is a residential unit, I can't use it as a residential, it's been used as a residential unit since the last 50 years, I can't use it as a residential unit. So they become frustrated when they come to the building department. And I think that's the genesis of accepting those from the zoning issues, not the building code issues, but the zoning issues, and requiring the rest of them to go in front of the, the zoning board.
All right. I kinda agree with, uh, Counselor Beazall, I mean, really, to be honest with you. I, I think he's on the same track as I am, 'cause I understand what you're saying, when you get a residential area and it goes vacant, 'cause we had one up in my neighborhood, it was a two-family, and when they made it into a single-family house, they couldn't convert it back over to two-family according to, according to the city. Because it went back to a single and it, all it was, was residential, I think it was residential A. And I understand some of this, but what I'm, what I'm having a hard time to gripe, to understand is that if that two-family, an investor comes in and buys it from the bank cheap and it's been vacant and he's just going in front of the zoning for, because it doesn't meet the side yard requirements and we don't have any rights to put any restrictions on it to say, bring it up to standard codes, we're defeating our purpose. That's my argument. We're defeating our purpose to make the neighborhoods better and stronger and to make them look That's how I feel.
Counselor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. If, if Counselor Boishman wants to sell a crappy house to Mr. O'Hara, um, I, I hope Mr. O'Hara doesn't buy it. Counselor Boishman has every right as a private property owner to sell his house to Mr. O'Hara. Mr. O'Hara has every right as a private citizen to do his research and refuse to buy that property. Government of the city doesn't have any right to interfere with that transaction unless it poses a public safety. Thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
Just look at the tale of two properties. 20 Tilton Street, 22 Tilton Street. 20 Tilton Street was built in 2011 on a non-conforming lot, okay? And it's been abandoned for two years, okay? 22 Tilton Street was built in 1909, is on a conforming lot, but it is falling apart and dilapidated, okay? 20 Tilton Street needs to go for a special permit because it's on a non-conforming lot, okay? And it's, was built four years ago. 22 Tilton Street was built in 1909, it's on a conforming lot, it's been empty for two years. It doesn't have to go in front of the commission for any kind of a special permit. What did we buy? What did we do to make our neighborhood safer? We're just saying that this person is entitled to the same rights that this person is. Just because you have a house on a non-conforming lot does not mean that you have a house that's a piece of junk. It just means you bought a house on a non-conforming lot and it was allowed in 2011, so it's allowed now. It's really, doesn't make the hu, the city any safer, it doesn't change it, you can have a piece of, a lousy house built in 2000, in 1909, falling apart on a conforming lot and that person does not need a special permit to move in. But this person does because it's a non-conforming lot. So take the lot out of the equation and make it so that the houses need to be brought up to code for another reason, but not because of a non-conforming lot.
Counselor Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick, to the criteria that, uh, that Attorney, Attorney mentioned for the zoning board, we could use that at our May, excuse me, at our February 4th hearing. Like, we could use that criteria as we go forward with this, this petition.
That's correct, sir.
We said in bigger print would be offset, but you made this small print.
I would do that for you.
But that'd be, that'd prepare us for this one and that way, if they don't wanna, uh, you know, pay the new fee and that, they could just go along with this. At least we'd have that criteria that we'd be using in the future and be, if somewhat of a, a standard that we could have. So, okay, appreciate that.
Counselor Dean Tally.
I wanna bring it back to Planet Earth for a second. This is before us because we, on several occasions, looked like deers in the headlights when these things came before us. We're all smart individuals. I unfortunately am not a Mensa person. I don't know everything. These things that come before us, I have no business looking at them. I have no clue what I'm looking at, I don't know what it is they're being requested to vote on. And I'm embarrassed to say that, so that is why this came before us. They're still gonna go through channels and they're still gonna go through a legal authority. We cannot oversee the transactions of every single person who buys single and two-family homes. Unless we wanna be North Korea and have police on every street and march them into the houses to see what they're doing, we're never gonna be able to do that. That's where this conversation's starting to go. We have to worry about every single property in the city that may or may not have a transaction. I say we move forward with this, put it in the authority of the people who know what they're talking about, because we don't, to an extent. And I am not gonna sit here and concern myself with issues that might fall through the cracks or might, we may never see. We may never see them, period. Even if we were still having the authority, we can't forcibly pull someone in, in here because we don't know if they're doing it or not. So the conversation for some has gone into, what do we do in every single instance? It's not possible unless we are living a police state. Thank you.
Counselor, I think anytime, uh, authority is ceded from, from one entity to another should be paused and some careful deliberation, but in this instance, um, I think this is both a positive and a logical move. We're removing some subjectivity on our part and giving this consideration and this deliberation to, um, uh, much more objectivity by giving it to, um, a board that has a stringent set of rules and criteria, uh, that's gonna, you know, carefully evaluate each one and knows the intricacies of the criteria much better than we, we can. We can't be experts in every field. We have to be generalists because we're looking at everything across a broad spectrum. So I think, um, this is certainly a positive move to give this, um, to give this authority to the experts, people who deal, um, with this on a much more regular basis than us. That said, unless there's any other counselor with comments or questions, I'd ask anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed.
Move 230, 315 be adopted.
I have a motion in second, uh, that the order be adopted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? One in opposition. Loan orders, 22915, ordered that loan order 15314 adopted by the city council on July 1st, 2014, authorizing a borrowing of $23 million for sewer separation projects be amended in its entirety to authorize an appropriation and borrowing of $34.1 million for various wastewater projects as per the attached. This was amended to $31.25 million.
229. Second.
I have a motion in second. Counsel, this is a roll call vote requiring two-thirds for this to pass. Madam Clerk.
President Kuschmerich?
Yea.
Counselor Bean?
Yea.
Counselor Boishman?
Yea.
Counselor Beazall?
Yea.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Dean Tally?
No.
Counselor Green?
Yea.
Counselor Hay?
Yes.
Counselor Joseph?
Yes.
Counselor Caddy?
Yes.
Counselor Tran?
Yes.
Passes 10 to 1.
23015, ordered that the city of Fitchburg has authorized, uh, the appropriation and borrowing of $4 million for sewer separation projects and ongoing repair and rehabilitation of the sewer system and infrastructure. Final reading.
Second.
I have a motion in second to adopt 23015. Counselors, again, this is a roll call vote requiring two-thirds to pass. Madam Clerk.
President Kuschmerich?
Yea.
Counselor Bean?
Yea.
Counselor Boishman?
Yea.
Counselor Beazall?
Yea.
Counselor Clark?
Yes.
Counselor Dean Tally?
No.
Counselor Green?
Yea.
Counselor Hay?
Yes.
Counselor Joseph?
Yes.
Counselor Caddy?
Yes.
Counselor Tran?
Yes.
Passes 10 to 1.
Orders, finance.
Second.
I have a motion in second, uh, speaking to the motion counsel. Dean Tally.
Um, Mr. President, I would request that we, uh, take both of these under suspension since they are grants and we have the individuals here this evening that wanted to speak on them. Motion for suspension on 416.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension on 416. Counselors, the order is before you. Mr. Curry, I believe this is pertaining to you, if you could speak on behalf of this.
Good evening, counselors. Counselors, 416 is a-
Oh, there's counselors, they're still under suspension? Yeah.
We need a vote on suspension.
Okay, so we need a vote on suspension. All those in favor of suspension?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Now it is before you.
Second.
Motion and second that the order be adopted. Speaking to the motion counsel.
I would request if we could let Mr. Curry speak since-
Yeah, so we have the order.
Right, yep.
Mr. Curry, go to the floor.
Counselors, this is a grant from the Department of Environmental Protection. It is a school recycling grant. It is in the amount of $40,670. $19,000 of that is for our time spent educating and providing what the needs are of the school to implement recycling in the classrooms, as well as the cafeteria. And then it also includes $21,000 and change for the purchases of equipment for recycling in the classrooms and the cafeteria. The, the grant does require a policy within the schools. There is a written policy before the city, uh, excuse me, the school committee, that will be looked at and voted upon within a couple of weeks, as well as in the future months. We've, we've gained commitment already from all the principals in writing, and the superintendent, as well as the fire chief. Not sure why that needed a commitment, but that's, so be it, as well as the Board of Health. So that commitment is done. We will be working with the schools to identify exactly what that equipment is and how we expend that portion of the grant.
Counsel Green.
My question was specifically on, what, what is your idea for $21,000 worth of equipment? Like, what, is that new trash receptacles? Is that, what, give me a sense of what that equipment is going to be.
Well, I think we're going to identify exactly where the biggest problem is. And I think if, if, if it means we purchase some recycling bins for each classroom, so be it. That was the original intent, but I think we're more looking at the issue within the cafeterias, where styrofoam is, had become a problem. It's a single use. It's creating a large bill in the schools as far as trash. We're, we're exercising our right to open it up to see if we can do something with that issue, as far as those trays being recycled, or another alternative that's approved by the state as well, as well as to, to spend the money on that issue. If we can afford it, we're going to try it.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel Joseph.
I just recommend that we hire back recycle man, Counsel Leover, to help you with your recycling education effort.
Part of the grant does, the reason for the written commitment in the school policy, it does ask for each principal in each school to commit to it, and hopefully, along with that, would be a champion from each school to help us out. And that's kind of what we'll be working on in the next, in the coming months.
Counsel, I have a motion and second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous.
Motion for suspension on 516.
Second.
And second for suspension on, I know, 516. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Would the order be adopted? Second. Thank you.
Do we have someone speaking on behalf of that grant?
That would be me as well.
Mr. Curry, if you could, if you could address this before we take a vote.
Yes. Counselors, this is a $24,700 gift from the Reimagine North of Main Street. The purpose of the gift is to install View Inspect and View Enforce on housing inspectors' tablets. These two programs will allow electronic inspections in the field. We try to step away from paper and coming back from writing reports. Hopefully, doing inspections in the field electronically will eliminate the need to come back to the office and write extensive reports. These programs will automatically write a report in the field. Hopefully, this will get inspectors out in the field a little bit more. It also has a View Enforce component, as I mentioned. The View Enforce component helps track where the status of the code violations are. So example, if a code inspection is done, the violations need to be corrected by a certain deadline. View Enforce would flag that inspector that something needs to be done, an inspection or code enforcement. And it also track the, the type of code enforcement that's taken on the properties, whether it will be court action, or a ticket, or what have you. But basically, it's, we're trying to get electronic, we're trying to get rid of paper and filing, and this is a big step towards it. And it's not a huge gamble, because it's not city, city money anymore.
Counsel Deen Talley.
I just wanted to thank Reimagine North of Main for this generous gift, considering it's a capital, capital software asset purchase, and much appreciated from my chair that, that they were generous enough to give us this gift to allow this to go, to go forward. So one less capital need that we have in the city. Thank you.
Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Steve, we don't presently have any of this kind of stuff?
We do have tablets for, for food inspections. We, everybody, every inspector does have a tablet, but there has been no workable program for the housing inspectors.
Okay.
And there isn't one in Massachusetts, might I add. Connecticut and Rhode Island are, are using these programs, and they're quite successful, but nobody in Massachusetts is using it.
Like a follow-up on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Counsel Joseph.
I want to thank them again. Has, has, has the inspectors looked at the software and found that it is easy to use?
I have, and I believe a couple, it's been a couple of years, I have been applying for grants for a couple of years to do this type of activity, but I believe it, it is, it'd be more, more simple. The inspection form is actually on the tablet, instead of writing, there's dropdowns. Obviously, it's going to take some time to, to work, work out the bumps, but I'm hoping it will keep inspectors out in the field, because right now, they go out doing inspection, they spend two hours typing and then sending out a report. It seems, seems like we're not accomplishing as much as we could be accomplishing.
Great. I love the follow-up component as well, because I know that we all have issues with, you know, just the fact of reminders to get them out there to go after some of the landlords and things like that for code violations, so thank you.
It also allows me to, to track, oftentimes I'll get questions, especially from counselors, where a certain inspection stands. And we've been converting to DocuWare and putting our housing files electronically, which is a tremendous help, but if, if I'm not familiar with the case, I got to go dig in the files and find out where something is. I'm thinking this is going to make my life easy to find, find out where, what the status is, if, if it requires code enforcement and attention, or, or what have you.
Thank you.
Counsel Green.
Steve, I have to commend your office and your inspectors, and just so that the public has a sense of, how many inspectors do you have currently?
Housing inspectors, we do, we currently have four operating. One of the housing inspectors also wears another hat of recycling coordinator, which was a grant several years ago. So that individual will be utilizing the previous petition's grant money to get some of those things done.
All right. And is this anything, am I ever going to get a ticket book, really? I just want a ticket book, or a tablet or something to enforce, because we talk about this, you know, every month at our NICE committee, and the enforcement, the enforcement, the enforcement, the enforcement. So with this program, we'll be able to enforce more, but then I like the fact of the, like the red flags saying, hey, time has expired on this one, let's go after him again. Because again, I think that will help in the overall making our neighborhoods safer, making our neighborhoods cleaner, that when we've got a small force, and I commend your force for doing the work they do, but again, another tool, so that they're not spending, so they're in the field, not back at the office, typing these reports. So I commend you on your effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion and second on 516. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you, Counsel. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. 247-15, Inordinance Amending Chapter 181 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh, entitled "Zoning: Registered Marijuana Dispensary As Outlined in the Enclosed Ordinance and Accompanying Zoning Map." Reference Petition 165-15. Final reading.
Send 247-15 to its final reading, ordained, enrolled, and advertised.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 247-15 to its final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous.
Move 6-16 be sent to a public hearing on February 4th, 2016.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 616 to a public hearing on February 4th, 2016. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Move adjourned.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Announcement, Counsel Boshman.
Yes, I'd just like to take the time out to wish the residents of my ward, Ward 2A and 2B, a Happy New Year and a prosperous one, and to the people of Pittsburgh, I thought I had a chance to say it earlier. Thank you.
I'd also, I'd also like to take this opportunity just to, to welcome Mayor Deen Talley to the council chambers, congratulate him on his recent inauguration, and certainly, Mr. President, I look forward to, to working with you in the year ahead. I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?